Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting in order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fulton, here.
Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Mr. Chofu?
Here.
Trustee Colain?
Here.
Trustee Germain?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So, second.
Motion by trustee Colain, second by treasurer Horning. Is there any discussion? Being on all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Call of the public? Anybody have called of the public this evening?
I'm discussing the Penny subdivision.
We're gonna have a quasi like we did last time, yes. So, we have additional information this evening. Anything other than that this evening? Thank you. We'll go on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
Move.
Support.
Motion by Petrucci, second by trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being on all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number seven A is applicant Penny subdivision. This is second discussion on this. We had asked for some additional information at our last meeting. Some of that has been brought to the township. With that, I'm gonna turn this to manager Whitman to kinda go over what that information was. And then, we do have Don Cartwright, and I asked Don after we're done with the presentation, he could come forward. He's the property owner, and any discussion stuff could obviously include him since he's really the applicant per se in this. So, manager Whitman, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. There are a few pieces of information new in your packet from last time, and just wanted to highlight those really quickly, as well as to note that the administrative committee did review that additional information and had made a recommendation for your consideration that involved some conditions. That you could approach it as approve it with conditions, or to postpone any further decision until those conditions are met. The additional information is there was a driveway easement in place for that lot number eight whose driveway does go over the outlot section that contacts Maxfield Road. So, that seems to be in order. That's not information that we had last time. There is, we did reach out to the Livingston County Drain Commission's office, and they had acknowledged a little bit of knowledge that they had in history, and they had, there's an email there that gives a recommendation that a topographical survey be done, which is in, like what was talked about, the stormwater concerns at the meeting last time. And then, we did also secure information and drawings from that area, including some old wetland inventory maps, as well as topographical data that we had. That gives a little bit better understanding of the lay of the land in that area, and how it was prior to the subdivision Forrest Brook Hills being built. And then, also information that shows their stormwater system. This diagram shows the sort of drainage boundaries after the building of Forrest Brook Hills, and that the few lots to the north drain towards the east. But, most of that subdivision does drain towards the south into an area that we can show. Here's the stormwater system for Forrest Brook Hills, and the red line shows where that stormpipe goes. And there are some catch basins along the way that point that water down to the south, towards the golf course area. And then, on a bigger scale, you can see that there's actually a county drain that runs along Lone Tree and around it, and then back out towards Long Lake. That basically, all that area to the south drains eventually into the county drain, which goes towards Long Lake. These are the topographical information for that area, two-foot contours. That you can see some of the questions and where the low spots and high spots are in that area, and then as it gets lower, as you go to the south there. And then, this is the broader region, and you can see the contours basically of that county drain in the low spot, and then where it goes out to Long Lake. This is 1978 floodplain map. It is in fact very wet there. And this is the MDQ wetland inventory map that's a little more contemporary. And then, more contour maps of that area. So, this is a, from the county drain commissioner's office, showing that county drain that goes along Lone Tree and out. The beginning and end being Pleasant Valley to Maxfield. And so, there's some new information there. The administrative committee's recommendation was a couple of conditions that they saw as important based on the board's conversation. That was to have a topographical survey done of that area, to have an engineered design for stormwater management to demonstrate that the stormwater and building on that lot could be achieved without negatively impacting stormwater for the neighboring parcels. And that there be a township engineer review of that proposed design. On those conditions, the board can either approve it with those conditions to be reviewed by staff, or you can postpone it, an approval until those conditions are met. And then, of course, if you do have grounds for denial, and we've talked about those. And if the board is inclined to do that regardless of the conditions, that decision should be made as well. So, with that, happy to answer questions the board may have, or you can...
Well, let's start with the board.
Yeah.
Questions from the board?
No, I appreciate the additional information. I thought it was very helpful going through it. It was helpful to understand, you know, just what's going on down there. You know, so often, we, you know, we make decisions and it's a snapshot of where we're at versus how it might affect everyone else. And, you know, I believe in property rights, but I also believe that, you know, there's a reason why it was a platted subdivision. That was created to be as an outlet. In fact, if there's a 20-foot easement across it, concerns me that how that's going to be preserved, or and what ultimately is gonna happen. I don't know. It just seems to me right now, we have, there's a few things still that we need to have answered. I like the idea of the recommendations from the drain commissioner to do a topographical survey to know just exactly what was going on there. It just seems odd, from my perspective, that you prepare a platted subdivision, you put in where all the lots are, and you identify an area that's an outlet, which is a fairly significant portion of that platted sub. If I were a builder, or the original plat, person seeking the plat being dedicated, I certainly would have looked to try and put a lot on there. I would have put a buildable lot. I would have designed it to accommodate that. We have that come in, we have that all the time. People come in here with their platted subdivisions or condominium developments. And I don't know what the reasons are. It could very well mean that at that time, when, at the time of the township, that you could only have so many lots based on the size of the parcel, or divisions, or what have you. But, it wouldn't be a division because of the platted sub. So, it just doesn't make sense to me why such a large area that had a 20-foot easement wasn't identified as a buildable lot, as in terms of all the other lots that were in that platted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Don, I'm gonna have you, if you'd like to come up. Not to put you on the spot, but the board has questions. They can ask you any questions directly as well. Don is the owner of the property.
Right.
So, James, just for clarification again, when we spoke about this at the admin, we spoke about having the topo done, and having it engineered, take a look at it, before we do the approval, because the concern over the water from the, what, six or seven lots to the northwest?
There's eight.
Eight.
The, it would be what was recommended, to do a topographical survey, to have the applicant's engineer design stormwater management plan to demonstrate buildability of that lot, and then to have the township engineer review that.
And that's in Trey's memo.
Yes, and that's in the three points of his memo, yeah.
No, that doesn't have to happen now, but before, there would be a land use permit issued. That would be a requirement, because of the impact on the surrounding lots themselves.
That's up to the board to decide.
That was a recommendation that we brought. It didn't have to happen now, but before, a land use permit would be a requirement.
But, if the board is inclined to deny the request, that should also be decided now. I mean, if the, or if you're not sure, then you can ask for the conditions to be met before you make a decision. But, if you have enough to deny it, of course, you'd wanna do that.
So, is there any questions for the applicant at this point? And to be fair to the folks that we asked this evening, to let them know that we're having a public hearing, I'd like to give them the opportunity that you would have to ask a question that's gonna get answered tonight. But, we've looked at all the different information, and I think you understand the different choices that the board has, so.
Bill, I just got one quick question from Mr. Cartwright. The timeline here, when that originally was developed or platted or whatever, how long before you or anybody purchased that outlot?
Well, when it was platted was, I think, back in 1969.
In '69?
That area. By Warren Cook. I had nothing to do with it back then. I didn't buy that outlot until, let's see, it was 1999.
And who did you buy it from?
I bought it from the Verhagens.
The original guy who platted, excuse me, the original guy who platted the sub held it in ownership for 20 years. And it should have, you know, instead of leasing or putting it back into the platted sub, he held on to it for 20 years, then sold it.
Yeah, with '87, it was when it was first sold after it had been platted by that same Warren Cook in the 60s.
When you purchased it, did you get title insurance?
Yes, I did.
Do you have a copy of that?
Warren Cook. I knew the family quite well. I know his son still. And Warren did keep a piece of property that was on Maxfield Lake itself, just across from where the outlot driveway, shared driveway is. And I just sort of figured he must have had plans of maybe someday being there.
Could I see it? Oh, this is a warranty deed. This is not title insurance.
Yeah, I thought it through line, really. And that was, Verhagens also had as the selling real estate company. Paid cash, so it locked to the deed.
I think the reason I asked for that is because I think that on title insurance, it would, they would have specific requirements and conditions within that insurance that they're giving to you. That's why I would like to see if you did get it. This is just a buyer's settlement.
I've called, and I've tried to get a hold of.
You would have paid for title insurance. Let me see something there. I don't think you got title insurance. They would have charged you for it, and it's not on the settlement statement. See, the title insurance would show specific requirements and conditions that they would have put in it. And I think those conditions would outline that this was an outlot.
That is our belief, that they usually, they come in the form of an exemption, and that the exemption would have, you know, they would have looked at the plat, seen that it was labeled as an outlot, and probably put an exemption for that reason. It was our understanding that there wasn't title insurance.
If there's no other questions right now for Don, I'll open it up to questions from, maybe you had a question? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sally Bowman, and we have lot number two, which is one of the lots that has the drainage easement on it. And you'd asked for some additional information from the drain commissioner, which I think we've provided. And I'm noticing on your packet tonight, there's a couple different places, right on page 28 and 29, that are referencing the need for a topographic survey for the outlot. But, the letter that is from the drain commissioner asks for the survey of the outlot, as well as lots two and three. So, I just wanted to point that out. It's the drain commissioner is asking for all three properties to have a topographical survey. Also, the letter from the drain commissioner, which I saw you had up there a few minutes ago, stated that although we do not see drainage easements on flats of this age, unless there was a need identified to convey drainage away from the existing road. There was question last time which way the drainage flowed. So, this states away from the existing road, which is what makes sense. Given the existence of platted ground, with some homes on the north side of Maxfield at the time the Penny sub was planted, it appears the drainage easement across your lot, this is a letter addressed to us. Easement across your lot is there to allow for conveyance of road drainage to the outlot A from the road. So, I'm hopeful that this answered the questions that you wanted answered from last meeting. So, my neighbors here with the pictures, somebody had requested pictures of the lot, so we have that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it should be noted, the administrative committee did look at that request from the drain commission regarding topographical survey of lot two and three. There was some question as to our ability to compel that. It could very well be your privilege to do that, and that may be important to the board. I'm not sure what additional information. You may have to decide the value of that. And having a topographical survey done for the outlot itself, and then having engineered design of stormwater itself on that lot, would still complete kind of the standard we always look at. That before it's developed, that the stormwater goes the same path and route that it did before and after the development. And so, you don't always necessarily have to, I mean, developments are done obviously throughout the township, given topographical survey work only on the parcel and question. So, that's a question for the board, whether you'd like to expand the scope of that topographical survey.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Good evening.
I'm James Bartiau, 1532 on their neighbors. My pictures are on my phone, so if you guys wanna see them, I'll happily pass it around. Last time it rained, I went out there, and this is just as it sits without development back there. Between lack of drains or ditches in front of other people's houses, I think I have maybe one or two other neighbors that have their ditch. Anybody wanna get shown to me? I mean, I can, you wanna see the picture? That is between our homes. And that's the 20 feet, and that's water, that's probably four feet deep of water. That's in between lot two and three.
Yeah, so in this area towards the front of Maxfield.
Yeah, this is taken from Maxfield Road.
And I've seen that condition for myself after heavy rain, and it does sit in that, the swale is not perfect.
And in the front of my house, that's my ditch overflowing into my front yard. So, even as it sits now, it doesn't have proper drainage. And if we were to develop back there, I can only imagine how much my sump pump would run.
Well, Joe, how does that work with a drain code or something? I mean, there's already an existing.
Well, that's a platted sub unless it's dedicated to the public in some form.
But, there's an existing issue before anything would happen with this, so.
Right. I mean, if you wanted the drain commissioner to fix the problem, you're gonna, property owners are gonna have to petition.
Even the owners that are currently with that issue would be part of that.
Right.
Wouldn't all be born on neighboring.
Now, the township could also petition to have the project and assess the property owners if, you know, but usually, you know, you work with them to find out, get some preliminary costs, and I know what they would be looking at, and how long it could be spread, you know, that cost. But, there's not an existing drain there. It would require, you know, some easements to be acquired, but I guess it's all on private property. I don't know if that, there's a connection. You mentioned there's the Hartland County drain that runs to the, was it to the?
To the, down to the south here.
To the south there, and then next into Maxfield. I don't know if that would make it all the way down there or not. It's pretty wet down there, is what I understand.
The water.
But, that's a private drain.
Yeah, the part in the platted sub is private.
It's a private drain.
But, what I'm saying is, is that if township or residents want it, the property owners want to petition, you do an extension. You can make it a public drain, and it would fall under the jurisdiction of drainage. The drain commissioner can't really do anything. He doesn't have any legal authority to do anything until it's a legally established drain. He can't, he can't do anything. Right now, this is all more of a private matter as it relates to drainage. You start messing with the drainage, and then you got people who are going to, I don't know. I'd like to, I think the topographical survey is probably what makes sense. And then figure out, I mean, what do you wanna do with that lot? You know, because, I mean, depending what you wanna do with that lot, could also depend on how the drainage is going to be handled. I mean, it needs to, it looks to me that the properties, you know, the lots, one, two, three, four, ultimately, there's probably, the drain goes to the front on five, six, and seven, and four, and three, comes to between two and three, and is supposed to discharge back into outlot A, is what I would. I think that's probably what happens, based on the description of what people said. There's a swale in front of the, along the Maxfield Road there.
Well, most of the homeowners have filled in their ditches. That's the problem.
Oh, that is a problem.
Well, the homeowners don't have to do it. The road graders do it too. Same with snows. They're just pushing the gravel upside.
So, I mean.
So, until there's a topo to really see what's happening with the water, nobody's, everybody's gonna be second guessing themselves at this point.
I think, though, that the situation that we have to consider also should address those homes that are to the east. Because the new subdivision that was put in assumed that was an outlot too. And, you know, it was already low ground to begin with. A lot, there could have been some fill brought in to bring that road up. And so, whatever we're doing on the upstream side, so to speak, uphill side, might attack those people downstream.
This is true.
So, I would be concerned. I guess I have an issue with, you know, definitions. If you go to a dictionary, an outlot's an outlot, and it's not supposed to be built on. So, I guess my initial premonition is to fall back on that and say that, you know, that was the way it was designed, and that was the way the property owners built their houses in the 80s, like over a 10-year period or something. But, I think to look at the topography, you're gonna have to consider, if you were to build anything on this site, what's it gonna do to the people on the east? If water is designed to drain to this area, either.
James, can you blow that up a little bit so I can, so while Matt's speaking, we can?
Either it used to drain past that road, and now it's prohibited from doing so, or it's restricted in some manner with a culvert or something. So, it's a, it's a bigger issue than just the Penny Brook sub, in my opinion, to come to a good conclusion.
So, this shows that the first, the top northern six lots of Forrest Brook Hills, all that area flows towards the east. Everything else goes to the south. And the stormwater system is designed around that. You can see that this, the storm system starts at that north. This is outlot A here, and.
Does that discharge into outlot A?
No, it brings the water.
Water from?
It goes, it discharges here to the south. There are catch basins along, on the road, and discharges to the south. And that keeps going to the south towards that county drain. That's all wet back there.
Water from outlot A ultimately makes it into a detention pond, a retention pond in Forrest Brook, and then makes its way down to the county drain?
That's the, where the water tends to flow in that area, yes, that's the.
Maybe there isn't necessarily, I mean, if the water from outlot A has a, is not being detained, has an outlot.
Well, that, so what we can't say, I mean, this stormwater system is designed to deal, yes, to take on, whether it's taking on all of it, or outlot A is retaining some of it. Can't say. That may be the case. It may not be in fact taking all of it.
Well, what if Forrest Brook was required at some point to receive the water that comes from the Penny subdivision? Because they couldn't block off the Penny subdivision, so the flow has to make it there, so. You see what I'm saying?
Yes. Only to the extent that outlot A didn't already retain water before the subdivision were built. If outlot A had waters, some water sitting and some that continued to flow, that's what I, this doesn't tell us that. There is certainly a low area there that would suggest, and some have said, that water does sit there.
Where, where it's only that, if there's some indication that the flow from Penny subdivision before the Forrest Brook subdivision was built was supposed to go and make its way ultimately to the county drain, which is what is connected, the Forrest Brook subdivision is connected to, correct?
Not connected. It just, you know, outlets into this area, and then the natural.
Naturally.
Natural flow eventually gets there.
Okay, so.
So, when this sub was built, it was intentional for all that water to end up right by that?
You can see this is all the high ground, and where that outlets is back, outlets here. And you can see the grade just continues to drop towards this area, and then eventually, oh. And this is the county drain here.
Is this after they built it, or before they built?
This is current state. You know, this is after it was built.
So, my guess is when that Forrest Brook sub came in, they contoured that so all that water would flow to that, the lots that were needed to, would flow to that water on outlot A? Is that where all?
It didn't outflow it outlot.
No, no, it's gravity feeds to that, to that low spot.
Correct.
Can I have Bob maybe address that?
You can put up the Forrest Brook one briefly for a second. Right here, essentially, all of this area that you see, Forrest Brook Hills was basically broken into a north half and a south half. To the right over there, you see the north half, and then, my understanding is. And then, my understanding is all those homes were designed to shed groundwater east. They're actually sit quite a bit higher than the outlot right there. It appears that the road was actually, or when the road was constructed, it was brought to a higher grade than Outlet A. So water right now, as it stands, would not naturally flow to the west. It's gonna naturally flow to the east, as depicted on the Forest Brook Hills drainage map. They had different regions. This one here, you can see it all kind of sheds to the east. Now, that horizontal line between is the lot six and seven, is there, this even be a bit? In reality, that's, that's probably a little bit down one more lot. So I would venture to say that it's quite feasible that Lot Seven actually sheds to the east as well. The remainder of the lots actually shed to the south. And that does ultimately, the intention was, though it's not directly connected, to get to the Heartland County Drain.
So they, they put a, right by Outlet A, there's a catch basin of some sort there?
That is correct, it's a collector point.
What water was that anticipated to collect?
Quite frankly, if I had to, had to speculate, I would say it's to not interrupt any water traversing over Outlet A. When this, prior to the development, you know, putting the road in, in the homes, you're essentially putting up some sort of barrier. Obviously, water takes the path of least resistance. That was probably, and most likely, the answer to create the path of least resistance, to let the water from Outlet A continue upon its intended path. There is.
Not only Outlet A, but everything else to the north?
And everything else that goes to Outlet A, yes, correct. Basically, Forest Brook Hills was not designed. We have no record indicating any such manner that it was designed to shed water to Outlet A.
No, I know that. I, I'm, I actually, just the opposite is what I'm hearing. And that seems, seems to make some sense, but there seems to be this issue with the road being at a higher grade. Is that correct?
You're talking about Courtney Court, the Forest Brook Hills Road?
Well, whatever.
Long, whatever, long.
Yes. Yes, ironically, the, the north-south section of Courtney Court is higher than Outlet A. And then it slowly progresses down. If you look at the topography map, the two-foot shot will actually show as further as you go south, eventually when you get to Shawan Court, it's actually quite a, quite a drop. Everything is designed in Forest Brook to head to the south. And some of that goes down Shawan Court as well, which does have an outlet at the bottom of it.
So, more, more trying to piece this together, before Forest Brook was there, it seems to suggest that the, the stormwater coming from Penny subdivision, whether it came from, through, it sounds like it would flow through, supposed to flow through Outlet A and ultimately go across and shed into that watershed, those lower contours, to sort of the south.
Yes, that, all records we have depict that.
And that would have been done before Forest Brook was there. So when Forest Brook was put in there, they had to accommodate the flow coming from Penny subdivision.
Joe, I just want to point, I had a discussion with James yesterday about this. If you look at these two sections, they're designed to be put together. And if you look at the, the top one with the easement and the ditch that's supposed to be there, and it lines up, when you put those together, they line up like that that was designed deliberately to take that water, just like you said. It, it was like, you know? No?
No, it's not the case.
Okay, why not?
Well, I was, I watched him put it in. It's two lots over. It's at least a lot over beyond where the drainage easement comes out at the end of the property. It's at least a lot.
So these aren't perfectly aligned. This corner wouldn't match up to this corner. So if you offset, it's, it's gonna be in this area. Certainly not suggesting it's connected directly, but they're, they're in close proximity to.
But they're in proximity of each other.
The thought is, is if you took Forest Brook out of the equation, your, your subdivision would have flown across basically part of the area of Forest Brook to make its way into the watershed, and ultimately maybe to the county drain. So it would seem to me that Forest Brook would have been required, that's why there's no restrictor there, to accept the flow from this area, that is Penny subdivision in that area, so that, that there's no interruption of flow that's supposed to take that water away. But it doesn't sound like that, that's doing what was, should have been done. At least that's why I, you can't prevent your upstream, your upland from being able to drain to, you know.
You can't, Forest Brook couldn't dam off their property without having a way for that water to get through.
Right, right, they, they would be, they wouldn't be permitted, I mean.
But the, the question that's unanswered and that would concern me is that unless, typically, you design a pipe to convey water to take on a certain volume, a given amount of time. And whether they installed that, or furthest point upstream to take on water, they could have picked an elevation three feet higher than the ground so that it would fill up and then flow out at a smaller, you know, a smaller volume. We just don't know. But typically, when engineer subdivisions are designed like this, they're gonna have, you know, the square, number of square feet draining into a given catch basin along a road or uplying stream. And there should be some calculations as to how they came up with sizing that pipe. That would be helpful to know.
Forest Brook?
But I, one more thing, I think that we may have two issues here. We're concentrating on, you know, whether construction on Outlet is an issue. But then the other thing we're dealing with or trying to discuss is how does water get off of Maxfield, and where does it go? And I haven't seen the pictures that someone offered to show, but it sounds to me like this, and my computer keeps signing off, this twenty-foot drainage easement may be nothing more than an easement. I'm not sure that there's a ditch there that truly conveys water. Or if it, if there was, you know, it's decades old, and it's grown in, and it's not serving its purpose. Otherwise, there wouldn't be so much water along Maxfield Road. And we have situations like that all the way across the county. I mean, it's not just specific to Maxfield, but that is some rather low ground to begin with. So if in fact that drainage easement was functioning properly, that would cause maybe a potential problems downstream. You might get some flooding situations and periods of heavy rain, things like that. That's, I, in my opinion, that's kind of a separate issue. If we decide that Outlet A should be built on, then we gotta consider ourselves with that. But I think our first decision has to be what, what is our consensus for construction on that property? And, and if we were to permit it, I think in the interest of all of the residents who are currently living in Penny Brook, it would be smart from a land use perspective to require that driveway to access the road to the east, instead of putting in a super-long driveway in everyone else's backyards, parallel to a road that's already there. That just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. The other issues that have been raised by the planning director is, you know, the lot doesn't conform to any of our current requirements for lot configurations. And, and knowing that, again, it goes back to what I'm saying earlier, that I don't think this lot was ever proposed to be constructed on.
Matt, when you, that statement, if you look at the lot, must be a, just the gray one just to the south, James? It looks like a triangle. Just the, the gray one to the south, on the, like the cul-de-sac there, the corner.
Lot thirty-one of the.
Yeah, right there. That, when you made that statement, Matt, I'm trying to understand that it doesn't meet like a requirement of anything in our ordinance? That lot's almost the same configuration as the one below it, except it's twice as big. Could you just clarify your, your comment when you said?
I, I think it has to do, and the planning director's comment is in regards to the minimum amount of road frontage and the ratio of, of depth to width.
Okay, I see. If you were to use the easement.
To do a split today, we certainly do have other, we call these flag lots. We have other flag lots throughout the township that are grandfathered. And we would, you know, outside of them being a platted subdivision, we would allow them to build on there. Whether they can be split again is a different issue. But we don't allow new land divisions to have this configuration anymore. There's a minimum road frontage and a minimum width to depth ratio that's required. And that's why this is non-conforming.
And Matt, you also asked to help further this, if you had the size of the, what determined the size of that pipe at Forest Brook?
Yeah, there should be, if it's a more quote-unquote "modern" design, you know, more recent construction, in order to get approval from the County Drain Commissioner, they would have had to have calculations that showed how they sized that pipe, and how much water from upstream it was intended to handle.
So is that the, is that the easement right there, the twenty-foot easement between, it's like your, your house and a driveway, maybe? Okay, and that water's flowing to the south?
But the, the swale is growing in, and it holds water now there. Would be intended that it would continue this way, but there's a higher spot, and so it.
That's heading to the south right there.
Then now that's heading towards the southeast.
Yeah, you're looking towards Outlet A.
This now looks, looks toward Outlet.
In my mind, it, it probably is south, but my, I'm trying to do a north-southeast-west.
It's south and east.
Is it southeast?
The outlot is behind the garage.
So there, there could be a number of things happening. That could, over time, somebody mentioned that could have.
Yeah.
The grade may have changed. It's, it's kind of keeping some water back. Who knows what happened to Outlet A over the years? It looks like, for a reason, all of that water was programmed to come to here and then head south, and then Forest Brook did.
The Drain Commissioner's letter said it was, the water was intended to go from Maxfield to the outlot. And we have a copy of that letter.
That's, that's what I'm, in my own mind, that's what I just said, but I probably misspoke. It's not the first time. I'm the only one in the room that knows what I'm talking about. Okay. So, and that's been there for years. And then Forest Brook took a look at that property and drained it all the way, almost to the, more towards the west side of Outlet A to put their pipe in. They made a decision that was the best place to go.
And that's, as you look at the contours, again, this is not a detailed topographical, but roughly in that area, the low spot, you know, tends to be on this south end, and, and would carry through.
And where they lined up, it looked like it was way far to the west, but it's, or whatever, to the left.
Yeah, this is the spot where, this is, this is where that swale, you can see the swale shown on the contour, and then this is where that pipe connection is.
Okay, so Matt suggests we have two issues on the table. Is it an outlot or not an outlot? And if it is a buildable, what, how do we rectify the issue of the drainage? Is that fair to say?
I think first we take a consensus whether or not we feel Outlet A is even buildable. I think that's your first question, right, Matt? Because if it's not buildable.
All right, so put that on the table. Do you, the consensus of the board, if it's buildable or not buildable, the outlot?
I believe it's buildable, in my opinion.
And randomly, Joe?
It's almost two acres, right?
How, how big is, how big a piece of?
Two acres, point nine six acres.
Yeah, it's like almost two acres. I, I think it's buildable, I mean.
Or some of that acreage is the easement coming in, or is it?
Right, right. I mean, I think it's buildable from the standpoint of, of a parcel of land, whether.
Is that what the question is on this?
I think the question is whether you, as an outlot, whether you're willing to make a determination that it can be developable as an outlot.
Well, I'm, I'm puzzled why it received a sewer assessment, right? And then also received, it's also been assessed as a buildable lot by the township.
Yes.
And the assessor said, for as time as he can remember.
For decades. For decades.
For decades. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, you know, with my reservations on the drainage issues, I'm not so sure I'm, I'm prepared to say that it's not, you know, not a buildable lot. Although I'm very familiar with what outlots are, but the problem is, is that, I think, prior to the Land Division Act being amended, probably going on twelve years now, or I forget the year it was the end, but when it was the Subdivision Control Act in nineteen sixty-seven, I mean, that was right around this time. And I'd be curious to see what the law, or the state of the law at that point, would think to find out. And didn't we have our attorney look at that?
So that was the difficulty. This, this was planted right before the Subdivision Control Act of sixty-seven. And so I contacted the Michigan Historical Library to try to get a copy of the act that was in place. We could not get that. What we did get was a handbook that came from the Department of Treasury on how subdivision plaits were supposed to be written. And the only meaningful thing that came from that, yes, outlot, basically had the same discussion. But maybe what was meaningful was that a buildable lot needed to be designated by a number. And so.
Well, there's, there's strong evidence there. I'm just curious why the, you know, the creator of the plaque held on to it.
For twenty years and then put it up for sale.
Yeah, I.
Wanted to make money.
Yes, he made money.
Made money, I suppose you're right.
And that series of errors, you're not, you can correct it now. It may give you reservations, that's up to you to decide.
I'm not quite ready for this in terms of, I'd like to know what the topo. I, I always like to try and find if there's a way to solve, you know, if there's a way to make this a win-win, create a, solve some drainage issues that property owners have. How the guy to build something that has two acres? Has been treated as, as a buildable lot for decades. And I'm not so sure there isn't an argument, without giving a bunch of legal arguments for property owners. But there are some equitable theories here that certainly could be asserted. And like I said, my concern was mainly how we deal with the, with the drainage. So I wouldn't mind seeing a topographical, topographical survey.
Comments?
Yeah, I have comments.
Go ahead.
I believe Outlet A is not buildable. I mean, Ken Rucker says he thinks that subdivision was plotted for that water to go to Outlet A. You know, the years and years of problems that came from it was because the original owner held on to it for twenty years and sold it unbeknownst to the buyer beware. They didn't do theirs, and it just snowballed in. So I believe it's not buildable. And I think it's gonna cause a lot of, just from reading Ken's letter, it's gonna cause a lot of problems.
Larry?
There's a lot of legal issues that, that bother me about the whole thing. But based on what I would see, I would think it would be buildable, just from the, even if the drain, if the drain was originally to go to Outlet A, it was also sent to Outlet A so that it could naturally drain further to the south. And when the subdivision was put in, they had to rectify that by putting that drain in to make it go to the south through the subdivision. Makes me believe that, that Outlet A wasn't designed to be a flood pain, a flood plain for Penny subdivision. Because it just naturally was gonna flow into that and then off of that. And, and with the, the positioning of where the drain is at, makes me think that they had to, they had to make sure that, that natural flow worked to the south still.
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Larry, but there's one thing you said that may or may not be true. You said that the water was intended to naturally drain out of that outlot. I have not seen any records that show that, you know, that could be a low spot in that area, naturally low spot. So it may not be draining out, it might be draining into the ground.
Good point.
So, and, and since then, it's been probably exasperated by the construction of a road. Because, you know, engineers like to have lots of fill underneath that asphalt.
because, you know, engineers like to have lots of fill underneath that asphalt, get good drainage. So what's happened since all this time could really even be compounded in this issue. And especially since we don't know what type of volume did that pipe size to handle.
Matt, would the engineer that would look at that, like to take care of the drainage, would the engineer look at that pipe and say that, yes, it is, no, it's not? I mean, so that one of the conditions that we have on here, if we approve it, would be the engineer making those decisions or giving us the information we need?
Well, if you look at our packet, it's on page 7A I, I think it's like page 48. There's two prints there that come from the design of the, I don't know the name, but it's the new sub, I'll call it.
Forest Brook.
Around it. Those, whoever found these sheets, it's probably part of a much larger package, which should have some design calculations on how stormwater pipe sizes, stormwater pipe sizes were calculated and determined.
Well, I agree with Matt from his standpoint that Outlot A, everybody that was around it, has treated it as the place for the water to go, regardless if it was or wasn't, we don't know that at this point. But all of Penny Sub, and they were the first ones in, it looks like that's where the water was at least directed to. Now, if Forest Brook builds theirs up, so water that was maybe going to shed out of that area can't anymore, they built up the lots, the south side of Lot A and put a tube in, they basically turned that into a, maybe not intentional or intentional, they turned it into a bathtub to collect the water. But we, because if the road's higher, then we don't know the past history of where that water was supposed to go to begin.
Right. My, the point that I'm trying to bring out is that someday, somebody with enough money is going to say, you know, "Maxfield Road needs paved." And they're going to want that water to get out of there. And the only place it can go is down that easement into this low area.
This section of Maxfield is paved.
It is paved.
Yeah, the pavement ends a few hundred yards to the south.
It's already paved. Been built. I just have a question. You made a comment about the road being higher, but that's farther south. I mean, if you look at the, where Lot A comes in, that road is on the, would be the south side of that lot. If you go, if you look at the, where the pipe comes in right there, this Lot A is just north of that. You've got Lot 30 there well before the road, and that's where the water's designed to go through.
And you know that, you know that water stops...
The road doesn't stop. If it stops, it stops it on Lot 31, 30, and 29, right?
I was suggesting on the west side, or the east side, where that road is built up, just north of Lot 31.
Okay, that side.
That side is built up. But if you were to look at the lot you were just speaking about, which was what, 31, 32?
Right.
I would almost guarantee you that that water either flows over the road on the front or flows back to that manhole to the back. Because that water probably at one point did flow through there. So...
Okay.
The construction around that lot hasn't helped the situation from the water that was originally coming off Penny Sub and had a way to get out.
Okay.
And we're kind of speculating. We don't know that for sure without seeing those topos from that and comparing them to what's there today.
And that's why it's my belief that we should, you know, approve this with the restrictions or the suggestions that the staff has made, because all those questions that we have that we don't, that we're speculating on will be answered before you can move forward. At least we're giving them directions.
I think the intent of this lot was not to be built on for a reason. I think it probably should stay that way. I'm sorry that, Mr. Carr, you bought this without checking that, or maybe you did. I'm sorry that there wasn't any title insurance, because that would've had the exemption in it. And I just think that if I was a lot owner on the outskirts of this, and I, and I did my homework on it and found out that was an outlot and wasn't going to be built on, and now it's going to be built on, I would be upset about that. So I think it should stay the way it was. I'm sorry the township made a mistake, however long ago. For the arrears, we have to, we'd have to reimburse him, but sometimes people make mistakes. But I don't think we, I think we shouldn't set a precedent by changing the, what the original intent was of this outlot. That's where I'm coming from on this. Whether the water's drained properly or not is irrelevant, irrelevant to me for what the real question is here. That's a different issue that needs to be taken up by the people who are being flooded. So, but that's where, that's where I'm coming from with this whole thing right now.
All right, so we're going to have to go through and everybody vote the way you want to vote, because it's going to be close to even decide if it's, and the question again is on the table?
We don't have a motion.
We don't have no motion, we just...
Well, if you're looking for a consensus, it should be very clear to what we're going to say, yes or no.
Well, the question, the consensus should be whether we're going to send the, send the property owner back to get a topographical survey. But that was interrupted by the subject of law, whether or not, as Matt has indicated, whether Outlot A in the first place is buildable, because if you don't have an answer on that question, it doesn't make any sense to send him to go spend any money on a topographical survey.
Correct.
So in my mind, you're not going to get a consensus that's going to require a vote on that issue. And it's a simple issue. It ends it, it ends everything. If it's in the affirmative, it ends the issue of what, our standpoint that, but I do think there's some things that we need to adjust here and deal with on this lot, because if it can't be buildable, then it's probably not marketable either, so.
But Joe, don't you feel that's irrelevant, whether, I mean, it's two acres. You're going to find, you know, you're going to find enough square footage there to build something on two acres. But don't you think that's irrelevant of what the real question is?
No, that's what I'm saying. That's, I'm not, I'm not arguing whether it's buildable or not. I'm pointing, I'm just clarifying what the issue is. If, I don't think we should send it, you know, originally, the proposal was, let's send them out and get a topographical survey done, so we know just exactly what we're dealing with in terms of the drainage coming off that property and how it goes southeast and how it affects. Because in my thinking, you know, if, and Ken Recker's email sort of says, oh, that, it looks to me like all the water's supposed to go, that was my conclusion from, at the, when I came, when we looked at this issue on January 17th, it just seemed to me that made sense to me. It probably makes sense to Ken, but Ken doesn't have enough information either. And the idea really is, is if there is an out, if there's an outfall there that sends that water, it's not supposed to be collected there, which we don't know, because as Matt has indicated, it could be set up as detention pond, so that the water, it still has an outlet, but it, water may just ultimately go disappear. It might just, you know, what do they call that? Try, lose mic, it's late tonight.
Percolates.
Percolates, there, there we go. It could be just percolating into the ground, in which case it never really leaves the site too much if it's percolating unless there's a high rainfall, which it does. That's why the outlet's there, so that it doesn't flood the Forest Brook subdivision, right? So the idea really is, is we don't know what the topographical is. Assuming all that's correct, it's still two, two, you know, two acres. His problem is, is that unless he has an easement to go on to the private road, he has to bring his, he has to go up that side in which he is a... See, that's the other problem I have with this outlot. It was designed in such a way, it almost allowed him to connect. You see how that goes all the way up?
Yeah, and that was, just to clarify, that's required, even on an outlot that was intended for never, had to have access to the road.
So it had to have access to it, yeah, that makes sense.
It also kind of protects the existing homeowners from the next property going over.
Right.
But staff has given us...
So I'm not, I'm not arguing whether or not the issue, I'm just trying to clarify, because either A, we take a vote and we all agree that it's out, it's an outlot, it's not, you know, it's not developable, we're not going to approve a development on that site because it's an outlot, you know?
Yeah, Troy gave us motion to deny, motion to approve, or motion to postpone. So it's right there. I mean, he's got the motion and the reason, because it's an outlot.
But if there's our, if it appears that everyone's leaning more to the fact that this is considered an outlot and not something that can be built on, I mean, it doesn't make sense to make, spend any more money on.
Can I ask the public if there's anybody here from Forest Brook Hills tonight?
Is there anybody here from Forest Brook?
Right there.
Good evening.
Do you mind if I ask you a question? Do you know if there's a house on Lot Number 31?
She was here last time.
Yeah, that was just built.
Yeah, she attended the screening.
Does, um, can I walk to the screen? I don't know if these are the three existing topography for any construction, because the ground was actually ironed up over here and straightened back this way.
Right, we don't, yeah.
So, that's existing. So the water that would be conveyed now, I think there's a little bit of pot, um, in that operation, there's a lot of water designed to that background way, just to get it on.
And the road, these are pretty high gutter road, and it carries it down to that catch basin. And this is the low spot, one of the low spots in the subdivision where that catch basin would catch that water.
So as a development comes in, do they have the ability to take their water and put it to a point to their adjacent and just worry about their own water? Or do they have to take into consideration the Penny lot?
The latter. They gotta...
So that pipe, in theory, should be big enough to take all of Penny...
And brought me the sheet that shows they did calculations. I don't have time to speculate thoroughly now.
But in theory, if it was done correctly, that pipe's big enough to take all that water.
Right.
There's plus Penny, Penny Sub.
What is it known? What is it known if there's retention, percolation happening?
If there's percolation, we would need to know that. So that, that...
Yeah, but how did, it would be interesting to see how they factored that in. That they would've had to have some type of reason to think that that outlot was not buildable when they did those calculations.
Well, all they have to calculate is what runs off of the property now. If water stays and percolates, they don't have to count for that. They only have to count for what runs off.
When all of that water goes back to that manhole, does all the water that comes off from that Forest Brook stay on their property? Or does it catch in there like a bathtub and then drain?
Eventually, no. You see, this is existing...
Outlot A is a temporary storage area until the pipe can take it.
Forest Brook Hills? They wouldn't be able to do that. I mean, if there was, if there were lots here that already naturally drained there, it would, they could sustain that. If the drainage of that area, if some of it outside of Penny Sub still drained towards Outlot A, as it naturally was before, it could continue to do that and then come back down through the stormwater system.
But if, I guess, let's put it another way, if Lot 31 through 26, or the other way around, if that water used to continue to go to the south, but now they've built it up and it's going back the other way, I mean, I just, sometimes I'm looking at this and I'm thinking Outlot A's been used for a catch basin for the water. And if that was part of Forest Brook's documentation, they would've had a, have a reason for that. Maybe there's another piece of information that we don't have.
And to some extent, that's probably true, because these lots 24 through 27 used to be Lot One of this planted sub. And so, and as much as that area was a part of the original plat, their drainage very well could've, would've been a part of that.
How, what year were those built, James, do you know?
Late 90s was the earliest one.
In fact, is that part of Forest Brook?
Forest Brook, yeah. I think the first house was 99, or somebody could probably tell me better. Late 90s sometime.
It was developed in 97.
97, okay, yeah, 97.
Iquinox was the surveying company.
Matt, would they have that information inside that document that you have in front of you, how they did that?
Yes, if it was done properly. The other thing I'm noticing is that the diagrams that are on the screen here right now, the split screen, the one to the, on the bottom, which is the southern part, has all the topography shown with the grade lines. The one to the north has no grade lines shown. So, and it might be because, as our GPW director indicated, there is a 40-foot-wide drainage easement at the north end of Lot One, or between Lot One and Two, at the Circle Drive up there that goes off to the east. So all that water would've been draining down the road toward the north and then overland toward the golf course.
So did that natural water course change when they built that road for Forest Brook? Like next to Lot in Penny Brook?
Sure changed some, hopefully it didn't impact it.
It's consistent in that these northerly lots, you know, go to the east.
Okay, so before that road, and I'm going to try and, I'm just trying to understand this thing, doesn't make sense to me to begin with. But if you look at Penny Subdivision, if in fact, before that road in was there, that, did that water used to flow to the east versus being forced into Lot A in the south? Somebody mentioned that the road was built up. I don't know if that's the case or not. But if all that other water now is already naturally flowing that way, I would think that they would've had to make some consideration for the natural drainage up from Penny Sub. I don't know, without looking at a topo, it's almost impossible to say.
And again, maybe to simplify, if you get over the hurdle of Outlot, those are the conditions then you can put, and that you don't need to, that you can have the requirement of the topo, and the requirement of engineered design and engineer review.
But my concern is, how that was treated all along, I think, has a big impact on where this thing has ended up. If it was treated as a detention-retention pond, which the way it kind of looks like to me, how did they make that decision? And who allowed that, those calculations to include that, to allow that water to go that direction? And I'm just trying to understand the moving parts. Matt, do you have any other questions?
No, but I have one more observation. I'm trying to find out what page it is. Can you go down to page 51, James? Or up, whatever, depending on where you are. That drawing there shows the topography as it is now, and it doesn't go far enough north.
Right.
Can you speak up just a little bit, please?
970.
There's not a lot of elevation change between this whole piece. Couple feet?
Six feet, 76, 70, six feet.
Six feet.
That's a lot, yeah.
My only thought is that if, in fact, it's true, and I... My only thought is that if, in fact, it's true, man, I, 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 I agree, I do agree with what has been said. It's an outlaw. I can see the point of view of the folks who lived there, that bought lots, they knew what their plat said. You know, that you can't expect them to go back in, in time to know what out, an outlet meant back in nineteen sixty-seven. You know, the law as it's written today says an outlaw is non-buildable lot. On the other hand, it is a significant parcel. It has a ability to discharge water from there, so it may not impact from a, from a structural standpoint, but it's a good chance that it wouldn't impact, it shouldn't impact, the properties of Penny, Phil subdivision. And there you go.
Well, I'll entertain, unless you have another question, ma'am?
I just had a comment. I think that if we, as a board, determine that it is an outlaw, as the presumed original definition was, then I think the township needs to step up to the plate and rectify an error that has been going on for decades. We've been collecting money for a sewer tap, which, in my opinion, technically should've never happened. We'll probably never know why or that happened, why it got to that situation. Perhaps even the owner asked for it, I don't have any idea, but, uh-
Well, that would have to be refunded.
Yeah.
And we can calculate that with the interest at the, you know, the same SAD rate. And then the, the parcel, um, could be treated as a, as a not-buildable lot, uh, for tax assessment purposes prospectively. There is no method to go back on that.
If, if that was truly like, uh, something like that, I'm thinking about where I live, and we have a lot that, that's not buildable, but it's up, you know, it's on a lake, um, all of us homeowners in our association pay the taxes on it.
Right.
Okay? So, whoever owned this lot was paying taxes on it, and all these other people were not, and technically, they should've been paying the taxes on it, if, if it's treated as an outlaw, right?
But what happens normally, like in my subdivision, we have an outlaw. When our subdivision got finished, Adler conveyed it back to our subdivision. At that point, the assessor spreads the value to the lots. This guy held onto it twenty years, then sold it.
It's unfortunately common-
That is the difference, right there. What Kathy's saying is the difference.
And it is unfortunately common that, that, that proper conveyance doesn't end up happening. Uh, this is not a unique situation in that regard.
It's not unusual in this township. The, the folks who live on Bullard Lake, the owner, the guy that developed Bullard Lake, decided he was gonna hold on to the, the dam and the berm, or whatever is, you know, for Bullard Lake. And then when things needed to get repaired-
It cost money.
And it had to cost money.
He gave it to them.
Well, the ultimate, they gave it to them, but I would never-
Gave it to the land conservancy.
No.
No, gave it to subdivision.
Part of it to the land conservancy, back to, part of it to-
You wanted my point is, he tried to deed it to the township, that's their problem.
Worth a million dollar problem.
Okay, so, uh, let's, let's move forward with, we got, uh, perhaps several different motions. The first one up would be, um-
I understand.
I'll entertain a motion, and we'll go from there.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the land division request, number eight-seven-six, with the conditions that were outlined by staff. I don't have them in front of me right now, not read, but I think it's all in our package.
Well, Troy's recommendation is not, there, there's, the approval is just an approval. He can go get a land use. He's got a proposed postponement where he has to provide the topo for denial. The approval, he doesn't have to go ahead and do any of that.
Uh, he's still, the same conditions should be there. Uh, I think he was more stating the grounds for that. But you could basically take that motion and either use the word postpone, or the word, um, approve. Uh, the word postpone actually got added after his memo was done, because that was the, uh, recommendation came out of the administrative committee to postpone it, with those conditions being first met before you reconsider it. Uh, you could approve it, and then staff can review that the conditions have been met, um, before issuing a land use. So it's, it's your pleasure on how you want to treat that.
And I would lean towards approval, because before Mr. Cartwright starts, um, spending a lot of money, getting all, getting all this information, getting all these engineers involved and all that, he should have some reasonable expectation that if it turns out that it's reasonable that he builds on that lot, that he can move forward and then we don't change our mind and, uh, for some other reason, deny him that.
Well, I will not second your motion.
Well, there's no official motion on the table yet, so.
He was, he was approved.
That was just move, okay.
But I do have a comment, if you get any, if you get a second.
He hasn't got a second yet.
Is there a second on that? No second. So, there's no motion on the table. Now you, you, would you like to have a motion on the table?
I was gonna speak against the motion, but I don't.
So entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the township has determined that Outlet A and Penny subdivision is a non-developable site, based on the following reasons. Outlet A was platted as part of Penny subdivision and specifically labeled as being an outlaw. And although the plat does not specifically identify the purpose of Outlet A, it would generally be anticipated that property labeled as outlaw would not be developed. Second, the applicant has not provided a valid reason for the township to consider changing classification of Outlet A to a development site. And third, provided this motion is approved, the township will be responsible for refunding to the property owner any previous collected fees for sewer tap and-
Any related sewer-
Any related sewer funds. And then fourth, that the, uh, property henceforth be taxed at the appropriate rate. Those last two conditions were not in our original memo, but I think they are appropriate.
Explain the third condition again.
Basically, refunding the REU.
Refund the REU with interest.
In any sewer, yeah, in any sewer.
That was the fourth condition, wasn't that?
No, the second one was modifying the, that the assessment would be, uh, modified-
As non-buildable.
As non-buildable, as appropriate.
I'll support it.
Okay, have a motion and a second by Petrucci? There, I think there's-
Call the question. So everybody's clear on this? Motion? The motion to, I mean, I, I have it, because I, I wrote it here, but I want to be sure we all know what we're voting on.
Would you like to rephrase it?
Just saying, this motion to deny the land division request of lot, uh, number eight-seven-six, um, to convert Outlet A Penny subdivision to a development site on the base, on the following basis.
One, two, three, and four.
One, two, three, one, two, three, and four. I didn't think it. That is the motion, correct?
That's correct. Well, there are a lot of errors made through this whole process, and it's, uh, it's very unfortunate that it's, uh, people kind of, uh, have a dream, they build something like that, they get sewer tap and, you know, after the fact, it's, uh, pretty unfortunate. So that's just my two cents worth. Any other comments or discussion?
I would say I feel very sorry for the applicant, but I feel that it's important that we try to do what's right.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Four, three. Uh, you had-
Glenn Harp.
Glenn, myself, and, uh-
Larry.
Larry Shofu. Your request is denied. Thank you for your time and effort. And then, uh, how would, uh, Mr. Cartwright proceed at this point with his site plan? He's gotta come and fill some paperwork out, how does that whole thing work?
Uh, yeah, we'll wrap that up.
Okay. So Don could contact somebody down here?
He was here today.
All right. Thank you. Okay, new business tonight, eight-eight is, uh, resolution solicitation ordinance.
I move to approve the resolution adopting the solicitation ordinance.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Jermaine. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Mr. DeRoe, call resolution.
That was a resolution, I'm sorry.
Quick, please call the roll. Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Colain?
Yes.
Supervisor Pauden?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Clerk Shofu?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine is board reports. We are in our-
Second meeting in February.
And we start with Trustee Jermaine?
I have no report.
Trustee Harper?
No report.
Trustee Petrucci?
No.
Clerk Shofu?
No report.
Treasurer Horning?
Couple things, um, in the request that, uh, we increased for the senior center bill, um, asked that we go to the other townships and ask for an increase. We have done that, and we are attending the Brighton Township meeting, um, in the beginning of March to ask them for a donation, or contribution for the seniors. They haven't given one in the past. Secondly, I met with the manager of the Rural Kings store and their regional manager out of Illinois, and, uh, discussed the possibility of farmers market going there. They were very excited about it. They had ideas about elevating the market, um, of having some of the vendors come in on an off day and, uh, selling their corn right in the store for them, or, uh, just having the honey people come in and sell honey. They were really excited about it. They went out, walked a lot, and said, you know, they own so much parking lot out there, like where the carnival was, there's plenty of space, so we had a lot of good discussions. So, uh, Troy was putting together the, uh, recommendation of the ordinance review committee, which was unanimous to allow it to go there, so I think he's got that on the next agenda.
It's on the planning commission Jennifer Thursday for discussion.
So, and then, just, uh, from a conversation perspective, the farmers market approached a business to do something that's maybe a little bit different. Uh, I'm not, I'm not saying this is right or wrong, but, um, is that, I mean, if somebody else wanted to do something else at a different business, uh, that maybe not be a like business, um, could there be potential issues with that down the road?
Well, that's, that wasn't even the issue. The issue was, the planning commission ordinance review committee was asked to look at it, as Hartland's had it fourteen years of making an event like Winterfest, Memorial Day, Heritage Days, it, it would be an event, and that it could go on any approved location that would be safe, so.
No different than a-
Right.
No different than having any, um-
All the vendors, right.
Carnival, except that they would still need a special use from us to do it.
Right.
The arrangement is between the property owner and the organization.
Right.
You'd still have to use a, I mean, it, the parking lot's still regulated as to what can be done there, no different than if they had the, uh-
Carnival.
Carnival. I will say, I do, the planning commission was asked to take a look at that, and I think they're looking at some modifications to accommodate this type of situation, so.
So if you had, and again, just, businesses are set up in a certain way, would this open up an opportunity for somebody to bring something into a business that might not match, but...
Well, to your new circumstance, it's not-
But I'm not, I'm not following you.
I'm not either.
Because, I mean, are you saying that, that the farmers market's going to compete with some other entity?
What if somebody wanted to go in and, and like solicit different things, like inside your business, it's kind of anything, I'm trying to understand a little bit more-
It's, it's the arrangements between the private property owner and the organization.
Is it more a question of the outdoor sales themselves? I mean, it's-
Well, there's, we've had a lot of discussion about what can happen outside in a retail business, and if you allow an outside sales of something in a business that we wouldn't let up, let them sell their own stuff, I'm trying, I'm just trying to understand.
I understand where you're coming from, but again, it still requires a special use from this body.
It's a special event ordinance, and it is going to the planning commission this Thursday, but it ultimately will come to the board. The planning commission will be rendering recommendations.
I thought this was already taken care of.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure we had a spot, because people want applications and ideas, so we had to go and find out if it could even be there.
So the special event ordinance amendment you'll be looking at, probably on March seventh, will be two elements. One will be to, uh, have, uh, the farmers market and Winterfest as one of the existing community events as, as exempt. Uh, and also, uh, as it stands right now, the farmers market is restricted to be on public and quasi-public property, that-
Right, that's the problem, that the, the, the planning commission committee is looking at, because it has to be on public, quasi-public. Um, and what it, what it boils down to is, farmers market wants to be in a visible location where people are gonna stop, and M59 is the only, that's where our commercial's running.
So, so, so your, your thought would be, this would be like nine o'clock until, or eight o'clock until one?
Oh, no. It's set up at nine, it's only running ten to one, and they're out there by one ten.
Okay, but it's on a specific day, or is it-
Specific day during the time. It's not gonna be like, um-
Any other.
You know, I mean, remember Power Flowers? That was a business, and it needed a special use, and they would be around until-
Right.
Well, and they got a temporary accessory endeavor, which was at that time. This, this special events ordinance takes that place.
Right.
I, maybe I didn't understand that. I was just-
No, no, I just, he thought it was all done deal. No, I just needed to find out if we could even go there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, she's, she's just approaching the private property owner and say, hey, what would you think about if we, if, if it were permissible under our ordinance, would, is this something you would entertain?
Exactly.
Okay, I didn't, I, I just, I misread it.
I was so excited, I just-
That's okay. And you know why, I get a little cautious once in a while. Okay, anything else? Um, next is Trustee Colain?
Nope.
I have nothing this evening. Uh, after a brief recess, we'll go to our manager's report and, uh, go to Adam Carroll. Hold on, did I miss something?
Ma'am?
That was first.
Oh, okay. I think so. Did I, I got you, didn't I? Okay, all right. Does, do you have anything else right now? Okay, brief recess.